Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting for Wednesday, June 9, 2021 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 20. We'll move right into the agenda and start with a roll call and call to order. Secretary Johnson Musad, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Member Karen? Vice Chair Extrem? Member Hollins? Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm here. Chair Poiety?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weider Gardner?
Here.
We have a quorum. Oh, and Member Karen has arrived.
I know that member Karen is here. She joined right as you were calling her name. So we do have a quorum, right? Thank you. Okay, and we call to order at 6:01 PM. Let's go to, if Andy is here with us, we'll do the report from the business manager. Mr. Paquette, are you with us?
Chair Poiety, Mr. Paquette just texted me to say he was going to be running a few minutes late, so I think if you want to move on with the minutes and we'll catch up with them when he comes.
Sure, we'll do that. So we have two sets of minutes to approve. This is item three on the agenda, May 12 and May 18, both 2021. I would entertain now a motion to approve both sets of minutes together.
So move, Johnson Musad?
Move to second.
Second. Chief Wall?
Member Wall? And thank you. Any discussion of either set of minutes?
My apologies, I'm just arriving, Amy.
Our Extremist here. I'll ask again, any comments, questions on the two sets of minutes? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
I'll abstain since I've just stepped in right now.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weider Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And is Mr. Paquette with us yet? Do we know?
Yes, he is.
Andy?
Member Hollins has joined us.
Oh, and Member Hollins is here as well, thank you. Andy, if you're ready, we'll take your report.
You're muted.
How about now?
Well, by the way, we can hear you now. I should have mentioned my iPad has updated WebEx and I can now mute everyone upon entry, so you have to unmute yourself when you speak.
Okay, good to know.
Exciting for me, maybe not as exciting for everyone else. Go ahead, sorry.
Think you'd rather sometimes not hear what I say, but anyways, so in FY '21, we're doing our standard end of the year closeout.
We lost your sound again, Andy. No audio, Andy.
Yeah, I know, I got you. How about now?
Yep, we're good. Now, the last thing we heard was end of year closeout.
Yes, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, so we're beginning and continuing our end of the year closeout of reviewing purchase orders to see about closing.
We lost you again, Andy.
We can't hear Amy now either.
Sorry, I was on mute. It looks like we lost you, but now, well, we can't hear you. We can see you, but we can't hear you, Andy.
Now?
Wonder if we should...
Can he get to where he's going and then log in?
That's what I'm wondering. Can we go, we'll do public comment perhaps, and then we'll come back to Andy.
Okay.
Sorry about that, everyone. Sorry, Andy, we cannot hear what you're saying. So we're going to skip ahead to the public comment for the meeting. Andy, I put you on mute until we figure it out. We'll go ahead to public comment for now, and for anyone following along on the agenda, we have started putting our public comment policy within the agenda itself. The way we work public comment and the remote meetings is to first work with anyone who's able to identify in the chat box for us with their name that they would like to speak. After that, we'll take anyone who can notify us verbally that they're interested in making a public comment. So for now, we'll start with anyone who's able to indicate in the chat function that they'd like to make a public comment. I'm not seeing any. Secretary Johnson Musad, are you seeing anyone?
I'm not.
Okay, so let's go ahead and go to anyone who wants to indicate verbally over the phone line or otherwise that they would like to make a public comment. You can indicate so now, don't be shy. You will have to unmute and indicate you'd like to comment. And again, I'm not hearing anyone, so it looks like Andy might be in a better place to, and we...
How about now?
We can hear you now. So we're going to close public comment for the evening. If someone joins later and does want to make a comment, we will try to accommodate it at the appropriate time. Go ahead, Mr. Paquette, please.
Okay, so we're closing out FY '21, ensuring that any grants and everything that potentially we are talking about carrying over into FY '22, that we're ready to do so. And also, we have met with the Budget Finance Subcommittee and we brought forward finally, I'll say, an updated revised budget transfer listing to clean up the personnel as we had intended to do previously back in October and as we said, with things occurring as they always had during these interesting times, that always kept getting pushed later on an agenda or to subsequent agendas. So we presented those transfers and the Budget Finance Subcommittee recommended to move those forward at a vote of two to one. And one of the things, I'll say, some of the discussions that we had, very good discussions, just because the transfers that we're recommending to realign the budget doesn't mean that some of the monies that we're taking them from isn't like a value or something that we're not looking to maintain. It's just a matter of the fact that the funds are there, so let's, quote unquote, use it now with the understanding that, and speaking in particular, like there's a human resource assistant position and curriculum director position that because those positions were unfilled, we were just for solely cleanup purposes, not at all a statement on value of those positions just to realign things. So that's what we presented and looking for, if I believe, was it shared with the full committee?
Yes, it was.
Yes, so I guess we would look for either a motion to approve those, so I can officially post those, but obviously I can answer questions regarding those.
Sure, so let's start with the motion. I'm looking for, I guess, a motion to approve the transfers authorized. No. Sorry.
That was Member Hollins. That was Member Hollins.
I was going to move to authorize the personnel transfers recommended by the Budget Committee, close out the school year.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second by Extrem.
Member Extrem with the second, and Andy Superintendent Hool, does that meet with what you need in terms of a motion that'll work?
Right.
Yes.
Discussion really this.
Are those shared with the school committee?
Earlier today.
Okay.
Can you help me find it in the, in what you sent?
Sure, it's actually in materials that Lauren sent out, I think, late morning today. It was an attachment, GPS FY '21 Revised. It's also posted for the materials for tonight's meeting, for anyone following along with us. It is the second materials attachment to the calendar, the calendar of item for tonight's meeting. It's seven pages. Do school committee members want a minute to look that over? Member Hollins, go ahead.
Can I comment on it? We had a long discussion about this at the Budget Subcommittee, and my motion mentions these are line item adjustments strictly related to people that we pay. At another time, there will be a separate, probably a separate set of adjustments that have to do with non-personnel items, contracts, you know, money left over in supplies, but this was strictly trying to align who gets paid what and getting the money where it's needed for people that we employ. I just wanted to clarify that. I haven't had a chance to look at the document, but that's what we talked about and what we agreed to recommend.
Thank you.
The document, I'll say, Member Hollins, was exactly what we reviewed, there were no changes made. It's exactly what we shared at Budget Finance Subcommittee, so we just forwarded that along, so.
Mayor Weider Gardner, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had the document, which I think is the one I have in front of me, is entitled, hello, just one more minute, GPS FY '21 Revised, is that what I'm looking for?
Correct.
Okay, and I have it in front of me and I have taken a look at it earlier.
I have a question.
If I could continue. It would be nice, I know we say this all the time and I understand what you're up against, but it'd be nice if we would get this more than a couple of hours ahead of time.
Yes, my apologies for that. When the meeting packet went out the first time, I thought that it was included in there, but I was focused on the budget update stuff and I admittedly flipped my mind. I would have no problem, I mean, if we, because as Member Hollins said, we're going to be coming back with another round of non-personnel related expense budget transfers that if, because of the fact that it came today, I'd come to the next meeting and we could do the full round of giving everybody a chance to review the personnel, and then also I could present budget transfers for operating expense, non-salary, if that's the wish of the committee, I'm willing to do that due to the snafu on my part.
Secretary Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I think, I think Andy said that the vote was two to one from the Budget Committee, is that right, for bringing these forward? Was there, does someone want to share a little bit of the dissenting opinion on bringing this to us?
I think it really wasn't, if I may, and I don't want to speak for Member Hollins, but there was two specific transfers that we were taking money from the curriculum director money that was budgeted for, even though part of it was coming from a grant, there was some money in the local budget budgeted for that, as well as the personnel component to it. Those, so she approved all the budget transfers, less those two. And the concern was that, and again, Member Hollins, I guess now that I've refreshed your memory, feel free to take it away.
Member Hollins, you're on mute, but if you'd like to...
I don't remember exactly, but I think I was concerned that we were put by emptying out these accounts of positions we needed desperately, that there might be a need, you know, right now to hire somebody to work on racial and social justice and pay them something. And I don't know, for some reason, this was a few weeks ago, it seemed like there was still time to maybe use some of that funding, that's all. But basically, it needs to be done, and that's why I supported.
Secretary Johnson Musad, does that help you? Do you want to follow up?
Yep, no, no, no follow up, thank you very much.
Okay, any other further comments or discussion?
The superintendent has her hand up. I don't know if that's intentional. The superintendent?
Oh, I'm sorry. Superintendent Hool, go ahead, please.
No worries, just to kind of further elaborate on the discussion around the curriculum director position, because of the timing of the calendar at this point, it really isn't enough time to be able to have that person work with staff. Plus, we don't have anybody in the position to do that work at the moment, so it didn't seem like a prudent thing to leave the money in that account, so that's the reason why we chose to recommend to move it somewhere else.
Thank you. And Mayor Weider Gardner, go ahead.
I'm sure it was said a few minutes ago, but where did you move it to?
Oh, I mean, it's, like I said, it's truly a mathematical up and down where I was just picking things from account to account to balance, so...
It didn't go to one single line item, it went to various places. Thank you. Thank you.
Sounds like we're probably ready to move to a vote. Any further school committee questions or discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please. Secretary Johnson Musad?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weider Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And just a sneak preview of things to come, as Member Hollins did say, we will now, I was mentioning to the Budget Finance Subcommittee, we're doing this in two steps because now with the non-personnel expenses, the goal is to double back and make sure things like we discussed prepaying special education tuition, so let's see where it is that those things fall regarding using those funds before we do another cleanup of the non-salary expenses, so, but that is forthcoming, so hold on to your seats. Same budget time, same budget channel, I'll say.
It's actually hard to wait. I can't wait.
We're talking about meeting 48 hours from now.
On to the FY '22, just that now with the voted number, we are doing as we normally do, and I'll say, you know, we are now for all intents and purposes rebuilding the budget with the administration, reviewing all their requests, the status of things, the other funding sources we have available, so that's the exercise that is ongoing as we speak. And, you know, as that work continues, we will, A, keep everybody abreast, and if need be for a Budget Finance Subcommittee to talk with them, give them a status update, but the work is beginning and ongoing.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Mr. Paquette about the FY '22 revisions and rebuilding of the budget? Superintendent Hool, please go ahead.
I want you to all be prepared because we're probably going to meet again before the month is over. We have received the SR3 funding numbers from the state, and we're getting ready to use that as a piece of the budget puzzle moving forward, as well as SR2. So probably this will require almost another sort of quasi-budget hearing kind of thing. The SR3 grant requires public input into the funding, so we could certainly do something like that. I will tell you that my constraint is that I am going to be on vacation from June 23rd to the 30th, so I don't know, you know, we may have to figure out a little later on in the meeting what might be a good night to meet between about a week from now and then. There's a meeting like twice a week with admins right now to try and get things squared away and which buckets of money things are going to come from.
Thank you for that update. If school committee members want to look at Tuesday, the 22nd, that was one evening we talked about potentially doing a 6:00 PM start, I have another meeting that ends at 6:00 PM or around 6:00 PM on that evening, but we should be able to make that work if we can get a quorum.
That will be my exit ticket to vacation, is to have a budget for you.
Exactly.
How fun for you.
Oh, sure.
Wait till you hear what I get to find.
I like that you think you can go on vacation and not have to attend meetings at the same time. That's cute.
Yeah.
Sorry, Acadian National Park is calling my name.
Anything further from the committee about the fiscal year '22 budget right now? I'm not hearing anything, so it sounds like, Andy, did you have anything else for us?
Oh, all good.
Okay, so we can let you go, however many meetings you're doing tonight, good luck.
Yes, thank you all, thank you for your patience and accommodation.
Bye now.
All right, so let's move forward. Any school committee member feel like we need to open up public comment again? I kind of do, just to make sure no one's waiting for a public comment. Let's just, anyone, if you are interested, either type it in the chat right now or unmute and let us know. Going once, going twice. Okay, I feel comfortable now that we've given people an opportunity for public comment, so we are into the second page of the agenda, and I think we can all safely say one of the highlights of every school committee meeting at this point is the report from our student representatives to the school committee. I do see Shane, is Danny also here too? Just you tonight, Shane?
Unfortunately, Danny wasn't able to make it today, it's just going to be me.
That's all right, we don't mind at all, go ahead.
All right, so first with student council updates. The student council elected its new E-Board for next year, and we are waiting to run class elections until the fall. The class cup wrapped up with the eighth grade winning it all, and as a result, the class was invited to attend a free screening of Cruella, complete with popcorn and soda. We had several eighth graders and their families attend. For some, it was the first time seeing each other since the pre-pandemic. Several students gathered last week to clean the grounds of GHS, including the football field, in preparation for graduation. The project was initiated by our newly-elected vice president Brielle Waddell and brought together students from Key Club and several staff members. GHS Key Club participated in the Massachusetts Save Promise Club celebration and shared the video of our Say Something initiatives. The Massachusetts Attorney General's Office and the Sandy Hook Foundation liked it so much, they've asked to share it to help other groups promote inclusion in their school communities. Congratulations to our officers for 2021 to 22, President Tess Rancourt, Vice President Phoebe Broussard, Secretary Atalie Kaloon, Treasurer Ava Waddell, and Editor Brielle Waddell. Wishing happiness and success to our seniors Casey Mate, Shayla Bassingway, Danny Lenoys, Derek Lenoys, Ellie McDaniel, and Haley Privet. This spring brings the 11th Annual Greenfield Public Film Festival. The screening will be held remotely with a film program featuring a range of narrative and documentary projects from students. Twenty-one awesome films will be shared this Friday, June 11th, at 6:00 PM. A brief rewards portion will be included at the end of the screening. The link will be posted on our gpsk12.org website and on Wave TV, our online high school newspaper. As we come to a close of the 2020 to 21 school year, the GPS Athletic Department would like to thank all the student athletes for persevering through these trying times to be able to compete in the sports they love. We would also like to thank our administration, school committee, school nurse, and coaches for giving athletes the opportunity to compete in a safe environment. Thank you. Again, congratulations to all the students that completed their seasons. Congratulations to our four sport athletes. We're so proud of these athletes who took advantage of the opportunity. Matt LeVoyne, who played golf, ice hockey, soccer, and tennis. Katie Hazelton, who played field hockey, basketball, soccer, and softball. Tess Rancourt, who played field hockey, basketball, soccer, track, and field. Our spring sports records are as follows. Softball went six to two, baseball five to five, girls tennis three to five, boys tennis five to two, boys track five to one, and girls track four to zero. Go to MIAA.net to see the schedule of spring tournaments begin June 17, and we hope to see you there. Fall sports signups will start soon. Pay attention to the emails and the announcement for One Family ID will open for the 2021 fall season.
Thank you, Shane. Very nicely done, we appreciate you. Will you be joining us over the summer for meetings in July and August?
I don't, I don't know if I'll have any updates to give, but I might watch some of them.
Well, we look forward to seeing you again in the fall. Thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.
Bye.
I know, isn't that, it's just so fun. And thank you, Danny, who I know isn't with us, but he also was great too. Okay, so that is item five on the agenda, we're on to item six, the administration reports. We'll start with Dr. Hool and perhaps Ms. Cloudier, but you go ahead and put it whenever you order you would like, Superintendent Hool. I am going to text Justin, because I think that he may not be with us until a little later, so I'll let him know that when he joins us to let us know.
Yep. Good evening, everybody. So the first item I wanted to report to you on is a proposal for a trip to Spain in April of 2022. This request is being made by Tara Cloudier, and I did review the materials prior to bringing it to the school committee, and it looks like she's got a great trip planned, so I'm going to let her speak to that.
Hello, thanks for having me tonight. I am here to propose a redo of our trip that got canceled for 2020. I actually have EF Tours, we're still using EF Tours, which will be my 11th trip with them since 1996. And I believe all of you have the packet, it's really the same information that many of you have seen that heard my proposal a couple of years ago. They were awesome with their COVID policies, and many of our participants got full refunds, but five students took a voucher, and they're still ready to go. So they have their voucher set, their parents are anxious for them to get on board and for us to take this same trip that you approved a couple of years ago. So I actually have a lot of interest, really, I think kids are kind of cooped up like the rest of us are and think that going to Spain might be awesome, as it will be. And of course, it will be contingent upon everything staying, you know, keep going in a positive direction with COVID and all of that. We are, I'm actually planning this year on bringing Anna Hartman, who's our newer French teacher. She's never traveled with students, and so she's going to be bringing some of the students who don't even take Spanish, some French students, just to learn the ropes and go as a chaperone on my trip so that she can start to figure out how to do it. We'll have a minimum of a six to one ratio for students to adults. We have excellent service from EF Tours, they will have a tour director pick us up at the airport and stay with us until the tour is over to leave us off at the airport. We are touring through southern Spain, we will fly into Madrid, go to Granada, Sevilla, and the Costa del Sol, where we will fly out of Malaga. You know, and I guess, since you have the materials, I'm open to questions that you might have, rather than go through every...
Thank you, Tara, that was great. This is Amy. I do, I do just want to make a comment, I was so relieved and appreciative about how smoothly it did go with the group that does the tours related to last year's trip not being able to go, and it's great to see that they've survived the pandemic and they're going to bring you all again on another trip. I fully support this, I think it's amazing that you're able to do it year after year, and so thank you, thank you for doing it. Any questions or comments from other school committee members? I can't see you, so you have to just speak up.
I was just saying, are you sure you don't need one more?
I was just saying, are you sure you don't need one more?
There's a lot of people at the Greenfield High School who are anxious to be joining on this trip.
Yeah, I know. I think it's great, and I support these trips so much. I remember I'm going back to our son's time in the high school. So, no, I think it's great, and I'm really glad you just pushed forward and plan to do it this year.
So we should do a motion. Right, we need to approve, is that, yeah. So we should do a motion to approve the trip to Spain in April of 2022 as presented.
Chair Poiroti, I just think maybe a caveat that it would be pending any tribal advisories from the CDC and/or the Federal Department of State.
Yeah, and if I could just address that, that that's very clear in the EF Tours policy, that they abide by that, and so therefore, we will. And of course, we would anyway, but their, their policies make it very easy for us to do that because they honor with vouchers or refunds or, you know, things like that. They have a peace of mind policy, and now an additional policy related to COVID as well.
Wonderful. Thank you for that clarification. So I'll take a motion to approve the 2022 trip to Spain as presented and pending any advisories from the CDC or the Department of State.
So moved.
Remember while in a second?
Mayor, second.
And the mayor is the second. And any further discussion or questions? I'm not hearing any wonderful. Let's do a roll call vote, please. Secretary Johnson Musa. I don't hear you. Oh, you're on mute.
I'm on mute. Okay, member Karen?
Yes.
All right. Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member while?
Yes.
Mayor Weider Gardner?
Hey.
Hey. Yes.
Motion carries.
Awesome.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving right along. It is my pleasure to introduce my appointment to the permanent principal position at Federal Street School, Michelle Fenimore. So I just, Michelle's done a great job as interim this year. She stepped right into it and has kept a smile on her face the whole time and has really just done a phenomenal job of leading the school as a first-time principal in the middle of a pandemic. I just can't say enough for the work that Michelle has done in her school to keep things running smoothly, to make sure when we return to in-person learning that it was a warm and welcoming atmosphere. She just exudes energy and enthusiasm that the kids just really love. And so it is my pleasure to introduce Michelle as the new principal at Federal Street School.
Hooray!
Absolutely terrific. Thank you so much, Michelle. I did see she was on the call earlier. Hopefully, she's still with us. We're thrilled, thrilled at this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm, I'm so excited to be at Federal Street School and continue there. Thank you.
I can't imagine a better choice.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on some more. So just again, a little update on our year-end activities. During the final days of school, which are rapidly coming upon us, we have Juneteenth activities. I did outline them more specifically in the written report that I sent to you as part of your packet in all of our schools, with our outcome being that we want our students to gain an understanding of the significance of the holiday and an appreciation for the freedom that it represents. And the activities are many and varied, from read-alouds to looking at videos so that kids can understand how the holiday originated, what it means. There's gonna be some responses that will be artistic and written and full-on discussions. So I think it's gonna be a really great use of some of the final days of the school year for sure in terms of being able to take this opportunity this close to the celebration of Juneteenth to be able to do all of this work. So I'm excited about that and excited to see what the kids do with it. Also, we have milestone celebrations going on in all of our schools, and, you know, the graduation on Saturday, as other folks have said, and I know Principal Pat Note is on the call, because she's gonna talk about her Preventer proposal in a little bit. But she and her staff did a great job of organizing just an absolutely wonderful ceremony. And I think the picture on the slide says it all in terms of just the sheer joy that the kids had, that they could actually come together. It was obviously limited based on the, you know, COVID precautions that we needed to take. But at the last minute, the state said, as long as they were outside, they could take their masks off, which was a good thing, because it was warm. Not quite as warm as it's been since then, but it certainly was warm. It was just a really wonderful day, and I was just so thrilled to be a part of it. And just wanna thank the school committee members who were able to attend, because it just, I think it was really something that the kids appreciated, having everybody there to support them. All of our other schools are doing Field Day activities during the last week of school, and also step-up celebrations as students go from one school to the next and move on. We are doing them with all, again, COVID-19 protocols in place, and also trying to be mindful of including all of the students, both our in-person and remote learners. So our principals have been pretty ingenious about trying to make use of technology to be able to broadcast the celebration to families and to other classes, because we can't bring everybody together, particularly if we have to be indoors in one space. So what they've done is they've made provision for classes to be able to join through video Google Meets and let families join from at home on Google Meets. And then for those students who are, who have been participating remotely, they'll be able to participate in the celebration through that Google Meet channel. So I was, you know, I just really, again, I think Principal Fenimore was the one who sort of was the genesis of this idea, and I think it's a great idea that the schools are going to do. So we're looking forward to a busy week next week of lots of stuff going on before we hit that final day of June 18th. The communications planning, I do know that Mr. Martin is probably not gonna be able to be with us much before seven, so Chair Poiroti, if we can just kinda hold that off till later in the meeting?
No worries.
Okay, great.
I did just confirm that with him. He'll be here around 10:00, I think.
Okay, great. And then last item on my report, it's short tonight. Who knew? Is that to have you accept a donation. The Subaru Adopt a Classroom program through Steve Lewis Subaru awarded Newton School $3,000, which they said was to be used on classroom supplies. And so Principal Goodwin chose to take some first-year teachers, who tend not to have as many supplies in their classrooms, because teachers amass things over the years, but to give each one of them $500 to spend on outfitting their classrooms with some supplies. And so I think it's a great use of the money. So we would just need a vote of the school committee to accept the donation.
Sure, thank you. What, what an amazing thing. So I am looking for a motion to approve the $3,000 donation from Steve Lewis Subaru through AdoptAClassroom.org to the Newton School.
They'll move by Ekstrom.
Ekstrom, and a second.
Second, Johnson Musad.
Thank you both. Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, please. Secretary Johnson Musad?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member while?
Yes.
Mayor Weider Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all. And that's it for me.
That's great. Any of the school committee members have any questions or comments for Dr. Cool?
Okay, I got it.
Is that a yes? Maybe that was just someone talking. Okay, I'm not hearing anything. Thank you, Superintendent Cool. Okay, so we're going to come back when Justin Martin joins us. And now we are on to the school committee reports with my report being on there. I am gonna make a report tonight just to actually start a discussion. I have been contacted and had a meeting with a parent of a middle-schooler and an elementary-schooler, who's also been talking to some other parents with an interest in looking at later start times at both Greenfield High School and Greenfield Middle School, based on the understanding and the research that has come out in recent years that adolescents sleep on a different clock. Isn't that the truth, right? And may benefit from later start times in the day. As you know, or maybe you don't know, our earliest starts are for our oldest students. Our later starts are currently for our younger students. Some of the interest comes from Northampton having done a study, and our understanding is they're actually implementing changes in their start times to reflect this research for fall of 2021. So they did a couple of years of planning and discussion, and I don't know what else we can find out if we wanna pursue this, and they will be implementing it in the fall. So this discussion that I had really centered around, of course, you have to look at the logistics of things like this. But also, it definitely ties in with what we are already looking at in terms of redrawing the map for the elementary schools in the district, and also our focus on equity and racial justice, and making sure that any changes we might make don't have an unintended ripple effect. And so as I had this discussion and kind of looked at what, what this would really mean if we were to undertake a study around doing something like this, it really seems to me that if we aren't tying all three of those things together, that we are perhaps missing, missing chunks of what we should be looking at. And looking at them together just kind of makes sense in terms of what we're being asked to do. And I'm not planning to do anything major right now, but I did just wanna have kind of a school committee discussion on what you see as possible, or what is of interest related to adding these start time changes as a possibility for the district. I'll take any comments or questions.
I, may I say something?
I'm not sure who that is. Is that member Ekstrom?
Ekstrom, Ekstrom. I am, I think, I know that we've sort of independently from each other been having these same kinds of conversations. So I think it's a really great topic, and I, I think that it's worthy of us taking, spending some time to look into.
Mm-hmm. We the gardener here. I don't know where Amy went. I just, do you have a?
It ever, I had to let the dog out, because I started talking in the kitchen, and so now she's gotta go in and out a thousand times.
I understand completely. Mine is happily sitting beside you and not talking yet. Do you have a particular sample of what start times might be, or you're not there yet?
Gosh, no. We would have to do information gathering first.
So this is high-level, do you approve of the concept type of thing?
Yeah, and, you know, not only approve of, should we look at these changes in start times, but is it, does it make sense to bring all three of these things together? Or should we still be looking at them separately? I don't wanna miss the boat on how we approach it, I think is part of the discussion.
Well, I guess I'd like, yeah, I would like to hear from the people that are, have been working on the racial justice piece and so forth, and what their comments are, and I think I felt.
Sure.
I'll bow out.
Secretary Johnson Musad, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I happen to be, I was an employee of the Northampton Public Schools, and I happened to be at a school committee meeting, like, I guess, more than eight years ago, where this was brought up. That was kind of like when the community was really starting to push, push it. And the superintendent was able to communicate exactly how complicated it is. It has repercussions on everything, busing, sports schedules, everything. So I guess where my mind goes is, these are three probably interrelated topics, the redrawing, the racial justice, and the school start time. And they're also all have to do with school, school capacity and school committee capacity. And I just, I think that, to give the update on kind of where the racial justice committee is at this point, we had stepped back from having the, that committee meet, because we're just trying to still get our regular committees and the regular work of the school committee on a regular schedule again. I think we've got, the other committee that I'm on is a policy, and I think we're starting to get a rhythm for that. And also, we have a new superintendent who will be joining us. So I just wonder if before, like, that we continue to kind of keep this conversation happening, but maybe involve the new superintendent when they come on about the capacity of the district to handle things, and how much can we handle at once? That's all.
Thank you. Well-stated, thank you. Dr. Cool, do you have a comment, question?
I would just echo Secretary Johnson Musad's comment that I think this is a conversation that really needs to, all three of these, wait until your new superintendent is in place, because obviously, that's the person who's going to have to implement whatever the decisions are. So giving that person the opportunity to get in and get a little bit acclimated to the district. And, you know, once that process happens, certainly, I will be as available as I can to you and to that person to try and help the transition be as smooth as possible, because, you know, we do wanna pave the way for that person, so it can be a smooth start. So I certainly would encourage making sure that that person is in place, at least to some degree, so that they can be from the ground up on the conversations.
Makes sense.
This is member.
Member Karen, please go ahead.
I think it's a really interesting idea. I definitely see the difference of, you know, how we were remote learning a few weeks ago and the wake-up times. But I think Glenn was really accurate. It does have far longer-reaching ramifications than most people even realize. You've got sports schedules, busing schedules, but you've also got that teenagers are getting home early enough to help babysit younger siblings or students of the community at lower cost. So it's a really large issue, and I think that it would be at least helpful to maybe get our hands on some of the Northampton studies. Not that Northampton socioeconomic are completely similar to ours, but it would at least be, that would be a starting point for me, at least. I would really love to read those, if anybody knows how to get there or pass that information along. I do think they're intertwined, but not so intertwined that the same committee has to handle them at the same time. I think maybe if we decide that the time star is a larger, more important issue, then we stop the redistricting. But I don't think we'll find that. I think we think redistricting is our most important first piece, and then we go from there. It's something to keep in our minds, maybe reading the study and keeping it there, but I don't know that they have to happen at the same time. That's a lot of changes, a lot of economics that will be affected by a lot of changes at the same time. I'm not sure.
Thank you. I see Mayor Weider Gardner and then Dr. Cool. You're on mute, Mayor Weider.
I'll let Dr. Cool go first, of course.
I would've said the same about you, mayor. So there you go. I, I would be happy to reach out to John Provost, who is the superintendent in Northampton. I know John well, so I'd be happy to reach out to him and see what he'd be willing to share with us. I'm sure he'd be willing to share some good information.
If you don't buy into doing that, we would definitely take you up on that. That would be.
Yeah, great idea. I, I support Member Karen's comments about this, 100%. Like it or not, there's definitely financial ramifications, certainly of the school start time. So we need to be cognizant of the fact that, one, we could afford whatever. So we need to be cognizant of the fact that, one, we could afford whatever those are. And we know that they're, that the benefits of it are probably great outweigh that particular concern. But it's still a concern. And I support Glenn, Member Johnson's thought that we need to not go, we need to find, we need to get more information on it. But it's definitely a worthy, both all, all three of those things, combined or not combined. I think if the more information we have, we could decide what is the most important way to go. But the school start time thing seems to be the first thing that we might want to work on because it will affect some of the other things. Particularly the redistricting piece, so.
Yeah, and one, one thing that came to mind when we started, when I started having this discussion about the changes in times is the, we don't operate in isolation. And in March of 2020, when we had to make the decision to actually close the schools because of the pandemic, the driver more than the virus at that point was that so many school districts around us had canceled already and closed already that our staff couldn't come to work. So those are the kind, that's one kind of ripple effect that something like this might have for our, our employees in the district and anyone who's, who's interacting with the district from, you know, another area. So yeah, we do, it does have a huge ripple effect. So it sounds like the consensus is not a bad idea. We got to figure out how it all gets prioritized. And we certainly need to wait for a new superintendent to be on board. Is that thing nodding heads? Any further comments, questions about this from the school committee?
I would like to comment, Weeda Gardner. I agree, it needs a new superintendent to be part of the conversation. But I don't want us to say, I don't want it to be, I don't want it to stop here tonight because I think it's a good idea. So let's make sure that we don't cast it aside with all of whatever else may happen as we bring on a new superintendent. It's not, nothing there is super eminently urgent to deal with. And I think the more we plan for it, the better we'll be.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else on this? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. Let's see. I didn't get a text from Mr. Martin yet. I don't see that he's with us yet. So we will move on to the next agenda item. Sorry. Let's talk about the superintendent search. Number Wall, please.
We have been working nonstop this week. We've interviewed five of the eight potential candidates. We have two more to interview tomorrow night. And the final one will be interviewed on Monday night, after which we will collaborate and choose the ones that we're going to send forward to the school committee. We've got some very strong people who have great ideas about helping Greenfield move forward. So I, I do think that they, that if we choose one of these strong candidates who are currently superintendents, they would want their voice heard in, in all of this. So we're, we're getting there. We are suggesting that you have, that the school committee have a special meeting on June 16th to receive the names of the finalists. If that could be worked out.
That would be the council, city council.
Okay.
But that's at seven, correct, Mayor? Isn't the city council meeting at seven?
It is at seven.
Is it preceded by Ways and Means?
It can be preceded by Ways and Means. They, they did switch to Tuesday meetings for Ways and Means and then comment from Ways and Means on the meeting. So it would just require us, I don't know that we should vote that tonight or decide. Well, we don't have to vote on that anyway. But yeah, I, I would say if, if there's a reason why it has to be on the 16th, fine. But what the heck, it's a meeting in the grand scheme.
It won't take very long because we just need to give you the names and finish with the planning, which I can tell you what the planning needs to be. We have to do site visits to the finalist home areas. And we're suggesting that those take place between July the 6th and the 21st. And that there should be a team of two school committee members that do the site visits. Since we don't know yet how many we're bringing forward, I don't know how involved that is. So that's why I say we can do that final planning when we bring you the names. And we can do those site visits either remotely or go to the site. If we do them remotely, it might be easier right now because school has stopped, will have stopped by then. And we can have virtual visits and people would be more open to that than coming back to talk to us, maybe. I'm, I'm just throwing out all the pluses and minuses and we can talk about that. And then we need to schedule site visits to Greenfield for the finalists and make the arrangements for them to see things and maybe have the interviews with the school committee that same day. And have one candidate per day come to Greenfield and be interviewed. Again, we don't know how many candidates there will be. So that it's, it's, we just need a short meeting to present the names and set up who's going to do what and when and where and so forth. But we don't want to get too far away from the end of the school year because it will be important that people are still around to talk to.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where we are at this moment.
If it's, if it really is a short meeting, then I don't, I mean, Amy, you can weigh in. But I, I don't see that it would conflict with the, I have no information on whether that city council meeting was planning to be started early. If you need me to check on that tomorrow, I will. But right now, it's normal time, start time.
And you know, we can do it another day. We just feel that it's important to let the candidates know who we've chosen since, since we've interviewed them, et cetera.
I wonder, that night, all the next week is kind of tough for me for evening meetings. But I was wondering, would it be too long to wait? And we are talking about potentially having a special school committee on Tuesday, the 22nd.
Well, don't forget that we can't disclose the, we can't tell the candidates what the results have been. Several of them are in other superintendent searches. So we would hate to lose the top candidate to another search. I mean, it's a complicated thing and I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm, I mean, I may have to miss the meeting. But, but as long as you've got a quorum, it sounds like it's important to keep this project moving along.
We just don't want to.
Timing is important. It is exactly that, Glenn. It is important to keep it moving along.
And we don't want to lose somebody because we didn't let the candidate know that we have chosen them.
Could I ask a question?
Sure. Go ahead, Mayor, go ahead.
In terms of site visits, are, is everyone New England based or are you traveling afar?
There are some that are in Connecticut.
Yes, I call that New England.
Okay. No, there's nobody in California in case you thought we were going to take a train.
No, I, I just, I went on a superintendent search to North Carolina once upon a time.
If there is someone from California, I'm willing. I'll twist, twist my arm, kids. I'll do it. For you all, I will do it with this desperate.
In the interest of, of time and organization, I, I think what I'd like to do, so today is Wednesday, the 9th. I think what I'd like to do is ask Lauren to poll the school committee for a quorum tomorrow for Tuesday, the 15th, Wednesday, the 16th, Thursday, the 17th. And we'll just go which with whichever one with our normal 6:00 PM start. So if you all could just remember to look for that, that communication from Lauren tomorrow and respond as quickly as you can. Because if we do it on Tuesday, the 15th, it would need to be posted Friday at the latest. So we want to be timely about it. But thank you for all of the, these updates, Jean, that is terrific. And all of the good questions around what we do next. Appreciate that. Anything else from you? And Liz Lefond, I know, was here. It may still be here if she wanted to add anything. Jean, did you have anything else?
I don't have anything else, but Liz may have thought of something that I missed.
So I'm here, and I will tell you the reason we'd like to get this release of the names public is that most districts will be finishing up school next week. And ideally, if we can arrange it with candidates, we'd like to start some of those site visits, even if they're virtual, the, the week of the 21st. So that like building administrators obviously would still be around and central office folks would be around. But it, it gives us a window to still try to get groups of students and teachers to participate in this, which is really vitally important for you to hear from. It's just a strange time of year to try to plan site visits and get all the people you really want to talk to. And I appreciate having whatever Judy's input is.
Just in terms of seeing teachers and students, it would not be obviously everybody, but we will be starting summer school programs on July 2nd. So you know, we'll have kids and teachers from across the district because there's a variety of things we're trying to offer to folks. So that, you know, there will be people available and certainly to do that. And just again, Liz, I will not be in town from the 23rd through the 30th. So if they need to speak with me or they need me as a tour, you need me as a tour guide or whatever else, you know, just, I'll just kind of throw that caveat in there.
So the only other thing I would add is that we kind of lose that whole first week of July, given the Fourth of July holiday and the way that people travel. And it might set us back a little bit if we can't get things done then. But I think that if we get commitment from the finalists, so far, everybody's been super excited and talked really positively about, you know, the good things happening now in Greenfield and all the good things that could continue to happen. So the interview process has been great so far, I have to say.
Awesome. Great. Thank you so much. And any other questions, comments from the remainder, remaining people on the school committee? Wow, it is hot in here and I'm having trouble articulating tonight. Any other questions, comments? Thank you both so much. Appreciate the updates. Looking forward to moving on with that. And I do understand that Justin Martin is now on the line with us for the communication update that we skipped over in the superintendent's report. So we'll go back to that now.
Good evening, everyone. My apologies for being a little late to, to the, the party, so to speak, tonight.
Hey, Justin, go ahead.
I wanted to give you all an update on just where we are in terms of the communication strategies and plans and processes that we're now working on. We did complete the communications audit. It's in draft form now. And I will be sending that out to, to the school committee through our superintendent for your review and certainly contact me with any questions you have on that process. We've also, as I think many of you are aware, we did a pretty comprehensive survey of community residents. We had a tremendous response there. We had close to 400 respondents in all, majority of them parents, who gave us quite a bit of feedback on the questions we asked. And I'll also be shit sending that along with you, with you all for review and to answer any questions you have. I apologize for not having that ready for you tonight. We closed the survey on Sunday evening. And so it's just been putting the analysis together the last couple of days. But that's, that's forthcoming as soon as possible. The third piece of that is both of those items I mentioned, the audit and the survey, as well as the work that I've been doing internally with the leadership team and the principals, primarily has been on putting together a strategic communications plan. I have been in touch with the, with Keith Barnacle in the mayor's office to get his assistance as well. And the next part of this process will be really getting the leadership team to review the communications plan and then bringing that forward to, to all of you for review as well. And finally, in, in reviewing some of the internal processes we have, we did notice that there were a number of internal communications processes that were missing in terms of simple things as far as how principals communicate with each other. And this isn't, this isn't unusual in some, in school systems as dynamic as, as Greenfield's is. However, we are working with the principals to communicate better together, put some processes in for reporting things as well. For, an example for that would be that if an ambulance shows up at one of the elementary schools or there's a fire across the street from the, from any of the schools, that the principal needs to text the superintendent right away and/or call to give the heads up. And then she or he would also then immediately notify all of you on the school committee to make sure that you were aware, so that you don't get a call from a constituent that says, hey, there was a big fire at the middle school or there was ambulances at the middle school. A, we don't, we want to make sure that you know and that you, you can speak credibly and intelligently to what's happening. And B, we want to make sure that you know that, what the facts are in those things too. So that if there is an ambulance that just happens to stop at a school for whatever reason or because someone in the school needed transport, that at least you have that information as quickly as possible and therefore aren't surprised or caught off guard. Along those lines and talking with the chair and looking at some of the policies that you have as a school committee, both the chair and I were talking about bringing, bringing this group together or a subcommittee possibly to look at what are our policies as a school committee in terms of communications. I've worked with a number of school committees throughout New England and in the southeast now. It can bring to you some best practices, what are some norms that some school committees use, and look at ways that we can strengthen the way you all as a school committee communicate with the public and perhaps with each other and with the staff and employees. And so that's, that's where we're at at this point. And that, that concludes the update, I guess.
Thank you very much. So in thinking about the policy piece, Justin, I'm wondering if it makes sense to have you come back and join us in July for our regular meeting of the school committee and do a high level overview at least about which policies we would want to tackle, for lack of a better word. And then do that in open session in a full school committee meeting. And then as we need to refer specific pieces of it to our policy committee. Would that, is that, does that make sense to you? Would you suggest a different way of doing it?
Yeah, there, there are a number of ways that I've seen the school committees and boards, you know, work through this. And that's certainly, that might be the best way to get everyone on the same page and getting us moving forward. And then from there, what the school committee's pleasure is on whether you decide you want to form a subcommittee, whether you want to form a community committee, whether you decide you don't need a committee at all. But certainly, sure, I'd be happy to give a, a presentation next, at next month's meeting on those best practices and give some examples of what, what I've seen across the country in high functioning communications practices for school boards.
Other thoughts from the school committee, thank you, about how we might approach this? Does that make sense or would someone have a different suggestion? I'm open to anything.
Sounds good. I think to the extent we can avoid adding more committees, just with such a small group, it's like tough to keep stretching it. So be certainly, I mean, I know about other members of the policy committee, but we, I certainly would be happy to have things referred there.
Sure, thank you. Mayor Weeda Gardner.
You're on mute.
Kindly unmuting myself as a husband I'm going to have for dinner. I'm sorry, but I can't say enough about how important it is to have good communications policies in order and done. So I appreciate your work. Justin, right? Yeah, and obviously, I'm glad to hear you're working with Keith on it. But so I, I support whatever we're going to do, let's do it. But so I, I support whatever we're gonna do. Let's do it. And let's make that a focus of what that particular meeting is, because I think it's really important. Having needed to build a city from the ground up in the last year and a half, I understand what it means to put in good policies. And particularly around communications where I know at least at the city of Greenfield, there hasn't been any standards or protocols for that. So I really appreciate the fact that, that, that the superintendent and Andy and all of the folks from TMS have recognized this as an important thing that needs to happen. So greatly appreciate that.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor. Any other further comments or questions from the school committee? I'd just add that, you know, for, for me, as, as a member of the school committee, this piece with communication, both internal and external, has been something I've been acutely aware of since coming on in, in January of 2020. And I know we can do better. And I also know that the public has a very vested interest in, in how we communicate with them. We've seen that over and over and over again. I already see us making some really big improvements since, since Justin and Dr. Hool have come aboard. And I want to be very transparent about how we move forward. So I think doing an initial discussion in July in open session will be helpful to, to putting it in, prioritizing it correctly, putting it in the right perspective, all of that. So that'll be the plan, I guess. And Justin, you and I can talk about how we want to structure it and, and have you come back in July. Any further questions or comments? I'm not hearing any. So I think, thank you, Justin, for joining us. Sorry about the, the confusion about getting there, but it all worked out perfect. It was a smooth transition.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you soon. Wow, where are we?
You're on the budget and finance.
Thank you. Report from, thank you, Dr. Hool. Report from the budget and finance subcommittee. We're down back in item seven, school committee reports.
Excuse me. Yeah. So the report that I would have made, Andy made quite eloquently, and there really isn't a whole lot for me to say beyond that.
Other than not only will we be asking about a quorum on the 15th, 16th, and 17th, but we'll be asking about a quorum on the 22nd so that I can do my exit ticket to vacation.
And so that's all for budget.
Okay. I think actually folks should already just go ahead and plan on 6:00 PM, on 6:22 for the piece related to the vote on FY22 after city council has met and had their vote. And we'll figure out the other meeting for next week soon enough, sometime tomorrow. Okay. Policy and programs. Now we're into the, the exciting part of the agenda. No one likes these policy updates more than I do. All right. So we have a group for a second reading, which is a final reading on approving updated policies. And we have a group first reading, which we will revisit again in, in July. How do we want to tackle this? I know, should we do the second readings first? And can we, I, I lose track of these from meeting to meeting. Can we do a consent that puts all the second readings together as a vote, a motion, a vote? Hopefully, people have had time. Dr. Hool's saying yes, have had time to read the updates. And there were updates that Glenn, Secretary Johnson Musad caught some changes. And that was, that weren't reflected in what was sent out in the packet originally. Is that correct?
That's right. When we, when the policy committee met, we wanted to give the committee, the full committee, some time to comment. And then we met after you voted for the first one. We voted, we met again. We did get some comments from Member Hollins, and we took a look at them with some fresh eyes. There were some revisions that were made, and those were not included in the, this packet. But, but interim superintendent Hool did send out the changes in an email this afternoon. So with those changes, it would be to, to vote on this, on this group of second reading as a whole.
And the ones with changes are both in the second reading?
Yes.
The first one with, yeah, the first one with a slight change is J I C H from what was sent out. That's the alcohol, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited policy. In paragraph two, the words and/or referral to appropriate services gets added to the last sentence. Minor change. And then J, policy J F A B D on homeless students, enrollment rights and services. Head start gets removed from the last sentence because we don't have a head start. Thought we had one in Washington Street. Did it close?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. That's unfortunate. Okay. And I digress. So we have, I'm looking for a motion to approve as presented with the changes just indicated, the second reading of the policies listed on agenda, item 3A for policy and program.
So moved.
Secretary Johnson Musad and a second. I won't all go at once. I'll second it. There we go. And any discussion on any of these? Member Hollins, go ahead.
I want to say I was allowed to comment at the policy meeting. I'm not a member. So I was allowed to comment like a member of the public, and I appreciate that. I had three minutes, and I appreciate that. But I wanted to comment on two items. I think you covered one, but on the homeless policy, which is J F A B D, there's a statement that says, to the extent feasible, we will send a child to the school they're already attending. And it does say to the extent feasible, but I would say that it should be, I would, my opinion is it should say to the extent feasible and based on parent preference. Because the parent may not want their child shipped for an hour and a half somewhere else. They may be very happy to integrate the child in Greenfield. So the policy doesn't seem to allow for that. And I had one other comment on the policy. You didn't say which ones are in the second set. There's a policy on special ed observations. Is that in this set?
That is in, no, that's in the first reading.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comment or questions? I'm not hearing any. So let's move to a vote on the second reading policies. Secretary Johnson Musad.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Nice to have Extron.
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Alex Stein.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you. And now we're on to item B, which is the first reading on the two policies, I V, I H B A A, the observations of special ed programs, and then the pre-venture proposal. Let's, and Karen Patnold's here to present on the pre-venture. Why don't we do that? And then we'll do the discussion and vote on this. Principal Patnold, where are you? Are you ready to join us?
I'm here.
Excellent. Welcome. Nice to.
Thanks for having me. And I appreciate I was at the subcommittee as well. So thank you. Just a brief overview. You have been provided with all the documents. But part of our behavioral mental health work that we've been doing this year, our two adjustment counselors were trained by Communities That Care Coalition in the prevention program. It is a screening tool in drug and alcohol prevention screening that we are planning to use with our incoming class of 2026. It allows for a quick questionnaire of all of our eighth graders. And then dependent upon the score of that questionnaire, students are identified in four different groups on certain behaviors such as impulsivity, sensation seeking, anxiety, or depression. And then based on the score that they achieve, they're put into a targeted intervention group. And it's skills based, where our adjustment counselors would be working with them and teaching them skills on how to navigate some of these conditions that they might be experiencing. So we have our two adjustment counselors that are trained. We want to launch this in September and really try to identify interventions that would help our students navigate some of the social and emotional needs that they have.
Thank you. Well, the materials you sent were great, too. So hopefully, folks had a chance to look at those. And for anyone following along at home, there are, is a very detailed description of the program within the materials for tonight's meeting.
We were happy, just, we were very happy as the policy committee to, to vote to recommend this to the school committee. So it seems like an excellent program, and we hope we will be able to find funding for it to continue in future years. But it seemed like even one year is, is good even in itself. So that'd be great.
So it is just a one-year funding?
So the Communities That Care Coalition is funding it for this year and tentatively, possibly next year. I did have a meeting with Kat Allen and Alana Gerjoy earlier, so we were discussing that. And then we wanted to look at two years' worth of data and see how effective the program is. And then hopefully, plan for funding for the future out of funding from either our general funds or ESER or whatever we can discuss. And I think that's on our agenda for tomorrow's E-team as well. And this will be part of the GHS budgeting documents.
Thank you. Does anyone know, I'm not putting you on the hot seat, Principal Patnold. What is the cost for a year of this program? Does anyone know?
Yeah, I, I just, it's funny. My adjustment counselor was just texting me because since Communities That Care was actually funding it, we didn't have a handle on it. It looks like for the workbooks for the year, subscription to the association and for the trainings, it's about $4,500, give or take, per year.
Money, there was some tie-in with opioid task force as well. Is, is, are they funding it as well? Are the referrals going?
I don't know if, if they have any hand in that. I do know that the Communities That Care Coalition paid for our two adjustment counselors to get trained. And they are offering another training this summer for our two guidance counselors. So we would have four qualified trainers. And that alone is pricey. So we welcome their generosity in that department. And then keeping the program going further is approximately, like I said, give or take about $4,500 per year.
Okay. Thank you so much. Other questions or comments from school committee members about this specific program before we move into the vote on the first read? Not hearing any. Thank you for joining us, Principal Patnold. But stick around until we vote, in case there's any.
Will do. Thank you.
Chair Poiroti, just as a point of order, you would not vote this tonight. I did double check in the statute because it is a curriculum program. This is a first reading, and then you would do a vote at your next meeting. And maybe we can kind of tuck that into the June 22nd meeting in some way so that we can move it along.
Sure. You're gonna make a note so I don't forget that, right?
Absolutely.
This is prime time for me to forget whatever it is someone just told me to do. Okay, so we do want to vote on the observation of special ed programs, however.
No, this is the first reading as well.
Okay. So we just want to review that and, and discuss related to it. Thank you for the clarification. So we have the I H B A A, observations of special ed programs that is also in the materials for tonight. Are there questions or discussion from the school committee on this? I see you, Member Hollins. Go ahead.
I read this policy. I think it's really important to organize who's coming into classrooms, no question. It starts out talking about parents wanting to observe their children. It goes on to talking about other people coming in to observe children. But then at number nine, it says observers have to have their reports in, must submit a report. I don't have it in front of me before a meeting. So when I read it, I thought, well, if the parent wants to come in and see their child, it doesn't mean that they have to do a report, right? They're coming in, they want to see, it doesn't mean that they have to do a report. So it seemed to me at number nine, it should say, if applicable, comma, blah, 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 observers submit a report so that a parent doesn't think they must do a report. That's all.
You're muted, Chair Poiroti.
Looks like you have a response to this. Go ahead.
Yeah, in this particular case, and Member Hollins, that's probably a good way to, to put the caveat in, is oftentimes a parent will have an advocate or, you know, and second opinion that they've requested. And that person is the one who's doing the observation, who would participate in the team meeting to put together the IEP. So, you know, that person would be asked to produce the report for the team meeting. So at that, you know, if the committee is amenable to that edit, I think that's a good one to do.
Sounds good. Further questions or comments about this? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. And I'm not hearing anything either about the pre-venture program. So it sounds like we're able to move on. Last chance. Okay. We will move on then. Thank you all for those that went smoother than I thought it would. That's great. And thank you to Principal Patnold for coming to join us. Appreciate the perspective. Okay, personnel and collective bargaining. I can probably do this one. So we met as a committee last Friday to review the job descriptions for superintendent and assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. And the subcommittee went through them point by point and ultimately voted to approve both as you see presented tonight unanimously. And I would like a motion at this point to approve, we'll do them one at a time because they're big ones. They deserve their own motion and vote, I think. So a motion to approve the superintendent job description as presented.
So moved. Extron?
Extron, in a second.
Second.
Second from Member Wall. Thank you. And any discussion about the superintendent job description? Member Hollins, you're on mute. Go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to comment on the six basic provisions. The first, it says the superintendent is the chief liaison between the schools and the school committee. The superintendent is also the chief liaison and spokesperson for the school district, is it just with the school committee? I know if you read way further down, it mentions that, but you're talking about the core responsibilities. That's one. Two, number four, it talks about the authority to establish advisory committees. It's not, superintendent doesn't have authority to establish school committee advisory committees, only in terms of the superintendent's job to establish study committees, advisory committees. So I would reword that one. My recommendation is authority to establish district study and advisory committees. So it's clear they don't do that for the school committee.
Member Hollins, can I ask you where you are in terms of the subsection? Because there's a lot of subsections to this. I'm just trying to follow.
I'm not on the subsection. I'm just on the major responsibilities right at the top of the job description. I think it's items one to six.
It's performance, performance responsibilities.
Yeah, the basic, the basic ones. I'm not getting into, I'm not getting into any of the detail. I thought it was a little repetitive, but that's up to you. Just on the basic responsibilities, I think number four should say district study and advisory committees. So there's no confusion. And lastly, I want to say that when Greenfield imploded and when it has major problems, it's not related to almost any of these six things. I think what's missing in the basic responsibilities, I'm just gonna read you what I think should be there. It has to do with money. And I think it should say oversight of resources, resource allocation, and resource. of resources, resource allocation, and resource allocation to assure goal achievement equity and financial stability. It's the basic responsibilities. It doesn't mention money. And that's the key, the key issue for superintendent, right up there at the top, planning for financial stability and equity and the distribution of funding when they put together the budget. That's it.
Doctor Cool, go ahead.
Yeah, Chair Parietti, just as a point of clarification, on page three of the document, there are four bullets with regard to fiscal management that I think addresses.
I saw that.
I mean, these are all subsections under the performance, just one moment, please, Member Holland.
Member Holland, please don't interrupt.
The performance responsibilities are divided into subsections. There's one on school district leadership, all the italicized sections, relationship to the school committee, administration and management, school records and reporting, fiscal management, school facilities, food services and transportation, curriculum instruction, student assessment, and furniture, equipment, and supplies. So that's why I'm having a hard time following you because I don't know what subsection you're referring to.
If I could respond, I'm not talking to any subsection. I saw the finance was there. I'm talking to the very opening of the job description where it gave the major responsibilities. It does not mention money. And I think that's a mistake because unless I'm not looking at the document, I don't have it in front of me. It's a job title. And then it says, I think, basic responsibilities. It was numbers one to six.
It's one to five and it's the qualifications for the position. So the things.
No, it's the next. I'm sorry.
It's under school, yeah, the next section is school district leadership. And there are six bullet points there, but the financial management is a couple of pages later. That's all under the performance. But they're all under the performance.
I understand. Please let me make my point because I've been in this district when we've had two huge financial problems.
Go ahead and try to explain it again. I'm not.
Okay. In that section that has the bullets one to six of the major responsibilities of the job, not.
All right, I'm gonna stop you right there. I'm gonna stop you right there. Because what you are talking about is, I know you don't have it in front of you, which may be part of the problem.
Okay.
You're talking about the first five items on, at the bottom of the first page, school district leadership. And you are saying you want something in there about fiscal management. And what Dr. Cool is saying, and what the committee has already reviewed, is that there's an entire section on fiscal management within the job description.
Yes, I'll just make one more comment if I could. I understand everything you said. I just want to say the financial management is the.
You want financial management to be part of school district leadership.
It's one of the key issues, and it's not there. That was my point in that first section. Thank you. It is a reason this district has fallen apart twice.
It's not the way the job description is worded that has impacted how the district is performed. Mayor Wiedegartner, go ahead.
I want to go to that same section again, and I'll try to tell you what it is. It is performance responsibilities. And that is key to how the person does the job under school district leadership. And I'm the only one, and it's not a major concern, I just want to address it. Acts as the school district's main spokesperson and liaison between the school district and community, and the community, and oversees the implementation of various public relations efforts to keep the school community informed, engaged. I honestly believe that that should be a shared responsibility, and maybe it is elsewhere, but I didn't see it, a shared responsibility with the school committee. Because at the end of the day, it is the school committee that oversees the superintendent. And I think it is important that when you are communicating with the community, that it is a shared responsibility to be the spokespeople, plural, for the school committee. So if there could be some slight tweak on that, that might be a good thing to do. Just keep in mind how important it is for the school committee to be able to communicate with the, with the community as well.
Thank you, Mayor Wiedegartner. Further comments? Not hearing any. So, Mayor Wiedegartner, you didn't suggest any wording. I'm wondering if we could, we could work out quickly some wording you would suggest for that change so that we can do a friendly amendment and put it to a vote tonight and make the modification after. If Dr. Cool, would that work for you? I'm also looking maybe for a little input, Dr. Cool, from you as well about would that be a common way in a superintendent's job description to word something? Do you have concerns about that?
Um, I don't have concerns. It's just that particularly when you're looking at, say, an emergency situation, that there is a single voice that speaks. You know, if you had a major problem on the city side, the mayor would be the voice of, of the city. So I think it's a parallel universe to that. I'm, I'm wondering, Mayor, if this, if it would make you a little bit more comfortable to say that works with the school committee as.
Sorry, go ahead.
Something similar to that, you know, works in tandem with the school committee as the main, blah, blah, blah. Would that?
Yes, I think it's simple, I think a simple change there could be, I'm, I'm reading from the document now. Acts as the school district's main spokesperson in.
I would put it right at the front of that sentence. I would put in combination with the school committee, comma.
Right. And I would, I guess I would say, because we don't want these, as Superintendent Cool pointed out, we don't want certain major things to have to take a vote of this whole school committee. So I think it has to do with the school committee chairperson. So access the, in combination or in consultation with the school committee chairperson, acts as the school district's main spokesperson and liaison between the school district and community, and oversees the implementation of various public relations. I just think it's important that there's always a line of communication when you are talking to the public between the school committee chairperson, who is authorized to speak on behalf of the committee unless he or she decides not, decides that they need more input. But it, it's important that that person be involved in any kind of communications that goes out.
Yeah. So if I've captured it correctly, Mayor, it would be, or Chair Parietti, it would be to start the sentence under bullet number four, under school district leadership, to say in consultation with the school committee chair, comma, acts as the school districts, and so on.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I captured that accurately.
And let's, the maker of the motion was that member Ekstrom, I can't remember who it was. Would you accept a friendly amendment? Was it, was Secretary Johnson Musad, was it you? I can't remember who made the motion.
I honestly don't remember either.
I don't know that anyone has made a motion.
Yeah. We did make a motion. Susan Farber, can you help us? It takes her a little bit to unmute.
She is there.
Yeah, okay. Can we all accept the friendly amendment?
Well, I gotta be honest. I'm sorry. I hate to be a pain on this. It was Member Ekstrom.
Sorry, Member Ekstrom, yes.
It was Member Ekstrom, seconded by Member Wall.
And Member Ekstrom. Yeah, Member Ekstrom is fine. Sorry.
Member Wall, you're good with it, too? Okay, so the friendly amendment, it is accepted to the motion. Further discussion on this item?
I guess.
Go ahead.
Oh, I've already had a chance to speak. I'll, I'll, I want to speak, but I'll defer to Glenn because we were kind of tied.
Yeah, I see what people are getting at. I guess I do worry about what was just accepted as the friendly amendment, just because it does seem like the superintendent needs to be able to communicate even at times when they can't get in touch with the school committee chair, especially in emergencies. But honestly, I think that the language here as amended or as originally presented is all fine. And it all tends to work out less about what's written down on paper and more about, you know, establishing a practice that works for both the superintendent and the school committee. And I think that there's enough here to provide safeguards that I'm comfortable voting for this.
Thank you. Mayor Wiedegartner, go ahead.
All I was going to say is, previous to this with regard to, this is a Member Holland's comments on fiscal management, I, I full well appreciate what she is saying. And I think it is important. I appreciate the fact that there is a whole section on that going forward. I don't think it's a problem to have some sort of a sentence in that previous thing, which kind of gives the overall view of it, that relates to fiscal management. But I'm not going to die on that hill. So if you want to accept that paragraph below, I'm fine with that as well.
Thank you.
That is something we need to keep track of.
Dr. Cool.
One of the things, too, that I think, and we had this discussion at the, at the subcommittee meeting, is understanding that under the educator evaluation system, that fiscal, financial management is a huge area of evaluation of the superintendent's job performance. And I think I offered in a moment of weakness to do a workshop for the committee on the superintendent evaluation process this summer and to go through what that system looks like and how it looks for school committees. So that, again, is something that I'm happy to do because the job description describes some things, but the way you evaluate the person is on their curriculum and instructional leadership, their fiscal and, you know, their management of operations and fiscal work, you know, their own professional growth and collaboration with the community, engagement with the community. So there's, there's a whole, there's four big standards and all of that stuff that, you know, the superintendent gets evaluated on. So, you know, we can certainly go through that if you'd like, you know, at some point this summer and do a little workshop on that and then how that process works, especially as you're looking at a new superintendent for whom you all will be the evaluator.
Thank you.
This is Susan Farber, just checking in.
Yes, Susan Farber. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, for the minutes, I'm not clear about the current status of Member Holland's suggestion. I can paste that wording, which I did capture in the chat, if that would be helpful.
Why don't you go ahead and place it in the chat? We did not make any action on it. So right now, there is a friendly amendment only related to the wording of item four under school district leadership that adds the school committee piece to it.
Okay, thank you. Did that help?
Thank you. Member Holland, go ahead.
We're talking about maybe 10 words in the basic responsibilities or something. And I just want to say again to my colleagues, I've done the job in five places. If we're, if there's an introductory sentence, section, I understand there's a whole section later on. And I understand you pick it up all, everything in the evaluation. But I can't understand not wanting to have one simple statement that says oversight of the resources and, and making sure there's financial stability doesn't get a few words when it's hugely important to the job. That's all.
Point of order?
Go ahead.
Just that I, I would appreciate if members have amendments they want to make to certain documents, that if they can just make those as motions or requests for friendly amendments. I feel like what I hear sometimes is people expressing their opinions and then others on the committee jumping in to try to figure out how to make, how to accommodate their concerns. So I just think that would probably be the best way to accomplish the work of the committee.
Could I then make a, restate my recommendation from when I first spoke?
Go ahead.
I, I said, and I read, to add, my recommendation is to add a number seven to that listing of six responsibilities. And it was oversight of resources and resource allocation to assure goal achievement equity and financial stability. I did that initially. Thank you.
Okay, so would anyone like to make a friendly amendment to add that, I'm sorry, would, Member Ekstrom, would you agree to have that be added as a number seven friendly amendment to the motion?
Yes, I would.
And Member Wall, you were the second. You're okay with that?
Sure.
Any further discussion on this item? All right, so we're going to move to a vote. We are approving the superintendent job description as presented and including the two friendly amendments as described. Everyone clear on what we're voting on. Let's move to a roll call vote, please. Secretary Johnson Musad.
You're muted.
Yeah. Member Karen?
Yes.
Place your Ekstrom.
Yes.
Member Holland?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Parietti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all for that work. So we'll move right into the assistant superintendent of Teaching and Learning job description, which is also in the materials for tonight. It appears in the document, which is rather long, ahead of the superintendent job description. I would like a motion to approve the assistant superintendent of Teaching and Learning job description as presented.
So moved. Ekstrom.
And the second?
Second.
Second by Member Wall. And let's discuss. Not hearing any discussion. Are we ready for a vote? Member Holland, go ahead. Unmute.
Well, I did, I did have some thought about this. And I wrote out my thoughts. I just want to say, again, I think I understand the job. Here's what I'd like to say. The job description to me looks a bit assistive for somebody that we want to handle things. So for example, it says, assist with audits. Probably this person is going to coordinate and oversee the quality of audits. I don't know who they're, they might assist something that goes in from the special ed department or from a principal, but this is the person that's going to oversee the quality of all these things that go in. There's something where it talks about grants at number six. It says something like provides input. This is the person who's going to coordinate, oversee the coordination of district grants. It isn't just providing input. I don't know who they're providing input to. On number four, my recommendation is to make professional development its own item. It's in here with some other things. But this is the person who's going to coordinate the professional development calendar. And that has something to do with your budget.
Member Holland, hang on one second. So I'm assuming you're talking about in the section, performance responsibilities, the subsection under there, number four, that starts with assists central office. Is that correct?
Yes.
Assist under this.
For the end of that, the professional development, to be a separate item?
Yes, my, my overall comment in about six places, I don't want to tie everyone up, is that it's very assistive. But who is the person assisting? This is the person that's going to handle things. And, and anyway, I had a few suggestions like that in, in about five or six different items. And the last one is at number 18. It says the person's going to maintain a website or the sections of a website. I think what this person is going to do is provide content.
Correct.
Correct.
Sections of the website. Anyway, I appreciate all the work done, but this person has to handle things, not just assist some other person doing things. And, and it could reflect that better.
Derek, may I respond to that?
Go ahead.
So Susan, when we went through this, what I interpreted that as was this is the person who is likely going to have oversight on everything, but would not be sort of the final say. Wouldn't be the buck stops here person. But, and I, you know, when I, when I think of input, particularly at this level, it really is, they're the person in charge until the final decision is to be made. And the likelihood is that whatever decision and the work that they have done would be reflective of actions taken and therefore is the likelihood that we would agree to whatever their decision is would stand. And so if, and if I'm incorrect in that, and everyone, please feel free to, to correct me. Perhaps we need to have more language that speaks directly to that. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or discussion? I guess the way I would handle this at this point is I'd like to vote to approve this, or vote on this tonight. However, the vote handled, is handled, it's fine. And then what I would recommend is that if anyone feels like there's a number of changes that they want to suggest, that they put those in writing and bring them back to the policy, or I'm sorry, the personnel subcommittee to review and revise. But I, I think, I think we have a job description. And I understand there's different ways that people would want to express those things. It, it's not to me, in listening to your argument, Member Hollins, I understand it. I just don't think it's that important to change these words here and there in a job description that is really not, it's, it's, it's an overview of what they're going to do. It's not something that is, is live or die related to whether or not this person can be successful in the position. And I just, it, it's, it's already frustrating to me how much time we're spending on wordsmithing things that I think really are more than satisfactory in terms of laying out what the responsibilities of the job are. But if anyone, including Member Hollins, if you feel strongly enough, you can bring suggestions back to the, the subcommittee. Job descriptions are dynamic documents and they can change. And I don't have a problem with that. But I want to start with what we have here. And that's my comment. And I'll take any other further comments or questions before we vote. Hearing none? Let's do a roll call vote to approve.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
No.
Secretary Johnson Musad, yes. Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to number five under the reports from the subcommittees, health, safety and facilities, capital projects. How do we want to approach this? Dr. Cool, go ahead.
Um, this is just kind of a head up, heads up. We've been working on capital projects for this summer, so I just thought that, you know, that's probably something that that subcommittee should be taking a look at with us. There were several projects that have been outstanding for quite a while. I did go to, as did Chair Prayati, to the planning and construction subcommittee of, or the committee on the city side. And we did have some discussion about Green River as well as some of the other projects that we're trying to get accomplished. So again, I think it's just, would be a good thing for that subcommittee to kind of get back in since it's been a while since we've really done much with capital and just kind of make sure that, you know, everybody's informed about what's happening and where things stand. So I forget who the chair is of that subcommittee. I apologize.
I was just going to look it up. Does anyone know who the chair is?
Oh, chair of the health, safety facilities. That's me.
That's what I saw.
Remember Karen, you're the happy winner.
Yeah, you've, all the health, safety stuff for the past year and a half has been too important to only have at a subcommittee level. So we are ready to meet when you are.
Okay, so what I will do is do a poll. Is this a subcommittee that would prefer to meet during the day versus in the evening? Those of you who are on it, which.
As the chair, as the chair, I would prefer daytime only because currently I'm also on the superintendent search committee, which is almost every night. And we're talking about meeting on the 16th and 22nd, so days are easier for me. But if other members needed to be evening, we can have that conversation too.
And according to my list, the committee members include Member Karen as the chair, Member Hollins, Member Johnson Musad and Chair Prayati.
Woo.
Perfect.
So I will kind of send out some availability over the next couple of weeks, just so that we can take a look at what's on, coming on summer months. Secretary Johnson Musad, you look confused.
Is it a concern that we have a quorum of the school committee on, on a subcommittee?
Actually, you are correct.
Thank you. Yeah, you read my mind, Member Johnson Musad. I was thinking the same thing.
Comment?
Hold on. I actually think I feel like I intended for me to be replacing someone on that committee. So I, because I didn't have the same number of assignments as others did. But I don't, my note, my spreadsheet is the same as what Dr. Hollins, you think? Or I'm sorry, Dr. Cool, as you think the membership is.
Yeah, I just pulled this off the website, so.
Yeah. Let me see.
Actually, if I may speak, if we're talking about the health and safety committee, I'm actually a member on that committee, but I generally cannot.
Oh, hang on. So I have an updated spreadsheet that I think we're going to have to update the website because I did just find 2021 subcommittee assignments. I'll send out this spreadsheet. I'll share it. I think I have shared it with folks before. Health and safety, Member Karen is the chair, myself and Glenn.
Okay.
Is for 2021.
All right. Great.
And so I will, I'll make sure that this gets updated on the website as well.
All right, I'll, I'll take care of that with Lauren.
Thank you. Member Hollins?
We've brought up Glenn's question two or three times with different attorneys and the answer is already the same. You can have more. And I've asked the attorney general's office. A subcommittee is anytime there's more than one person and less than the full group. And it can be more than, it can be a quorum. So there's no provision that doesn't allow that.
Anything else? Okay, so we will move on from this item and health and safety and facilities will meet soon once a date is established. Is that the last thing?
It is. There's nothing in correspondence that's different than what's on your agenda. So you're good.
Yes. So we will be moving into executive session. We will, I will read this, but we will not return to open session this evening. I forgot to mention earlier, it's a little too late, but congratulations to all our graduates. I will say my, my favorite part of being chair is getting to sign the diplomas because I get to see the names of every student that's graduating and it's very heartwarming. And there's so many names that I know. And it's just really cool to be a part of that process. And congratulations to the graduates. I also want to commend the school committee because for the first time ever today, in my tenure as chair, we had all the signatures in on Wednesday for the warrant that's supposed to be due by noon tomorrow. Usually we're scrambling at 11:30 to get four signatures. So thank you all for being a, attendant to that. I appreciate it. And now we will open an executive session for the two exemption reasons. Item number, exemption number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do declare, and as I mentioned, we will not return to open session. Can I get a motion to open the executive session, please?
So moved.
That was Extrem for sure. And a second?
Second.
All right, and a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes, sirree.
Oh man, I'm doing this without my checklist. Member Hollins, I should be able to have this. Member Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Yes.
How did I do? Did I forget anyone?
I believe that was everyone. And then a motion to adjourn the public session, please.
So moved.
And that was Member Wall in a second.
Second, Extrem.
Okay, and a vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, five minute break. We'll see you all in the executive session. Thank you to all who listened in and participated tonight.